Who are here for agenda items, do not have to sit through that if you do not want to, but I encourage you to. If you're interested at all, it is the comprehensive plan for the City of Council Bluffs. And so it will be interesting, but again, being cognizant of people's time restrictions, we'll come to that after we review the agenda. So, does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
On item 3D, just a simple question regarding the Playland Park urban plan. I was looking over the weekend at a website for the interstate redevelopment. And they noted that they were still in the planning process about interchanges for the Playland Park area. The website, I think, mentioned potential of an interchange at 41st Street, which was kind of interesting, because that would run right through the Playland Park area to be developed. So, I was just wondering for Public Works, have we gotten any more hint from DOT as to what their course of action is, how far along they are in that planning process?
Don, if you want.
Okay. Brett can correct me, because he may have heard something different. To my understanding, they are gearing up to do their environmental review of that entire interchange area. And I think, once they do that, they can move to decision-making, property acquisition. And I assume the roadway is dependent upon future funding, which they themselves may not know. And just one correction, the interchange would move some of the existing 41st Street to 40th Street.
Okay.
So it moves one block to the east.
So they, that was just a typo in what they were proposing, or?
Yes, yeah. That was, they've had two preliminary concepts, and I think both show, well, I know one, the preferred alternative shows 40th Street as being the revised interchange for 4A and Playland Park.
Okay, but they're...
And we think they'll design around whatever we've got planned. That will play into...
Yeah, we've had those conversations a long ago. You know, just so you know, I mean, anything the city owns is considered state property, by the way. So if they wanted to take it, they could have taken it. You know, but they also have environmental issues when they're dealing with park property. So, we've talked with them, and we feel that we can do the development that we're going to bring forth to you in the next month, and they still can construct the interstate.
Okay. I was just concerned about what their plans were, because if they don't put an interchange there, then the only ingress and egress is going to be, basically go up through the neighborhood Avenue G, and that's going to be quite an increase in congestion.
Well, actually, the interchange would still be there at 41st Street. You know, so that would be probably the preferred route coming from Council Bluffs is using Second Avenue and that backward way coming from the south. That's how most people use it, but your point is taken. If there isn't a full access, there is issues of traffic through the neighborhood.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the consent agenda? Any questions on the public hearings?
Item 4C regarding the subdivision at Fox Run. I had a conversation with the president of the homeowners association there, and he still had some unresolved concerns about the retention ponds for that particular area, whether or not they were currently adequate, and whether or not the proposed plans would address those issues. I don't know if I've correctly summarized that at all, but so...
Can I get it addressed to council, or?
If you wanted to.
I just want to make sure I got the concern right, so that the staff could...
Otherwise, we typically would do it at the meeting tonight.
Okay, alright. Would it help you if I... Are you gonna, obviously, you're gonna vote tonight, but would it help explain some of the cloudiness before your vote?
You can do that tonight.
Alright, thank you.
But, if you, you know, we're a little loosey-goosey, and so I don't know if Don has answers that will suffice, or...
I'm sorry, Brett? I really don't, I mean... What you have tonight is a final plat, which is the second phase of the subdivision activity. The city approved a preliminary plan some time ago. That had a series of conditions in it. To our understanding, the developer has went through that. I don't know that, are there any exceptions, Ralph, on that?
I'm not aware of that.
I mean, they've installed the public improvements, they've did everything that they were going to do, that's why we would approve a preliminary, I mean, a final plat.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure if he had concerns about the current situation and the drainage after the development is done, I just wanted to make sure that he was able to get those reassurances from the staff. And so that's why, you know, suggested that he might want to come to the meeting. But, I don't know, have I correctly captured that, or?
You know, and around about is, have any of you been down to observe the development as it sits now, in the past month and a half?
I know the water exceeds the walls.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that was brought up at the planning commission back in February, I do believe it was, to enlarge the drainage pond on the southwest corner of the development where the houses are supposed to be, because we had concern of capacity. We were led to believe, per HGM and the planning commission, that, yes, no problem, there's plenty of capacity. There is not plenty of capacity. Just, now we have a new road through there, I don't know, Middle Ferry, I guess that's what it's called. Now, that road collects the water, it goes in that southwest pond. When we put the 59 houses in their concrete drives, more water's going to go in there. I have plenty of proof here that it exceeds capacity.
Exceeds capacity today?
Well, my idea of capacity might be different from someone else's idea of capacity, i.e. the state, the city, the town, whoever. But, you put 15 inches of rain, what we had...
Let's do this, if we could, let's do this at the public hearing.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
You know, and what I'd say...
You'll get a full 10 minutes to express those concerns.
Alright, very much.
You know, and I think, as far as answering questions regarding the stormwater, I mean, I do think you probably need to talk with, you know, how is stormwater being handled by the applicants, you know, engineer, followed up with, you know, our engineering staff as far as whether they've reviewed it and if they find it as acceptable. But, that was done at the preliminary planning stage. And this body approved that preliminary plan. The developer has pursued a series of improvements, and by our code, a final plat should be issued.
And that was my conclusion, that based upon the work that had been done so far, that this development would actually help improve the drainage down there. So, I just wanted to give a certain comfort level to the homeowners down there. That was indeed the case, so that's why I brought it up.
And again, the association, the homeowners there are not against this development. We're all for it, but there's a water problem.
And please, if you could be here at 7 to more fully express your concern, that'd be great, thank you. Anything else on the public hearings? Anything on the ordinances?
Item 5A, we had a discussion previously about purchasing of services. And I thought that was a fairly constructive conversation. And one of the suggestions made at that time was perhaps to tighten up the language on section 1.32.010. And so, I crafted a, just a brief amendment to the proposal, just adds a few words, and I'll pass this around for everyone. Just replaces the word "state law" with the words "Iowa code" and "Iowa administrative code", just to provide some clarity as to what it is that they're following. So, there's an additional copy there for Dick, so...
And for me, a non-lawyer, can you explain the difference between state law and Iowa code?
Well, the term "state law" was rather unspecific, if it just included statutory law as opposed to the administrative code, and those are two different things. And there's an equal requirement for cities to follow the administrative code as there is with statutory law, so that's the reason for the additional verbiage.
Right, thanks. The other thing I'd mention, the difference, if I may, statutes usually are relatively broader, and they usually, they're usually what's called an enabling act. They enable an executive branch agency to come up with specific regulations to kind of fill in a lot of the gaps, predominantly because legislatures generally don't like doing that, it's hard to get things passed if you get that specific. But it also supposedly should allow the experts in an agency to craft precise details of how to get where the legislative body has said they should go, as opposed to legislators trying to be that precise in everything.
So that's the only additional amendment on that, that particular ordinance, just those words.
Mark, how many copies of this?
I had six copies.
Because we should probably give him, don't you think? Yeah. Because you're the one writing it, are you?
Yeah.
You're gonna have mine for now, and I can get Marcie to make me a copy.
I just have one quick comment on that, that this was basically, I had talked to Mayor Walsh about the disposal of surplus property and the way the ordinance is written now, things such as a broken chair, it wants us to try to sell those things before we dispose of it, and it's not worth trying to sell a broken chair, we don't want anyone to buy a broken chair from us. That you may be seeing another amendment for 1.32.010, because Greg Reeder has been working on a citywide policy also, so we'd refer to that more specifically, even than just the state.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Good.
So that should be coming.
Okay.
Do we have a time, an estimated timeline on that?
The second revision came out today, I know, I'm not sure.
So, a draft has been written, sent all department heads, they've commented on return documents, it's been revised, and that revision is sent out today to the department heads, or another review, I'm guessing a couple of weeks, a month? If that's not too far.
And then this verbiage would be amended.
Okay.
To point to that.
Very good, that's good to know.
But you can still make errors also, I'm fine with that.
Okay, terrific, thank you for that.
And it really is an issue on... Jump. You know, it makes us, by Iowa code, makes us jump through a whole lot of hoops to find out that something that we upfront know has no value. We have to spend money and go through a lot of effort to verify, so we need to come up with something more simpler.
On that, definitely, we need to do that. I also, though, take the point that I look forward to tightening up and having a policy on the provisions, generally speaking, that are currently exempted. I think that's a good idea, too, and so I look forward to seeing that.
More questions on that one? Thanks for your work on that. Anything else on the ordinances?
On 6A, I'd like to inquire my colleagues, I'm inclined to agree with the original staff recommendation, I know we've talked a little bit about this, I believe at the last meeting, and the original staff recommendation was with regard to rezoning the entire parcel, including the roughly back half that I believe fronts onto Veterans Memorial Highway. And I just personally don't see the point of keeping it in the placeholder of A2, when that area's certainly becoming industrial, and we might as well just do it now, rather than have to do it later, because I think clearly that's what it'll be.
And the farm that is in operation there, the farm activities, those would just be a non-conforming use. I thought there was a farmer, he said it was a farmer who leased.
I believe so, but I defer to Dick on whether, if we change the zoning, it's still a non-conforming use if they continue to farm it, is that...
DA would be committed to that area, they're not on the issue.
Yeah, it's just a question of making the property more marketable for development, which turns out to be the concern of the homeowner just to the west of there, he appeared. And in discussing the matter with him afterwards, his primary concern is that he was being isolated and unable to get that property rezoned, so that he could, in effect, sell it off, so I think that this would help everyone concerned, and hopefully, if he wants to get that rezoned, we'll be open to that as well.
To do it the way Nate's suggesting, that's the way you should have it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else on that issue? Anything else on the ordinance?
Well, I think, the only other thing I had on that was just the third reading on the rezoning for the VA center. I'm certainly in favor of that rezoning, having the last two votes, but after what I read in the paper Sunday, I think the taxpayers definitely are owed an explanation for what we read, and I'd like them to come forward and explain to us, you know, so that the public will have an idea of how it is that happened. So, you know, I guess what I would recommend, what I'm going to be making a motion is to table it until they come forward and explain to the taxpayers what happened here. I'm having a hard time getting past what I read Sunday, so I think a lot of people have a lot of questions, and I don't want to encourage what they're doing, and I think that they can come and talk to us about it.
Do you think we should put a phone and tell just the next meeting and have them come in?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Is that possible, Dick?
And it's not that I won't vote for it.
Yeah.
But I really would like a lot more information, I think the taxpayers would like a lot more information about how it is this happened, and I want them to know that we didn't just carte blanche say, "Yeah, go ahead with this plan", that in the end turns out to be very questionable.
I would agree, I think it gives a chance for, certainly would give a chance for those who allegations are made in the article, it would give them a chance to explain them, and maybe they can be explained, I hope so. If not, certainly that's something I think we all ought to know, and so I'm inclined to agree with your idea.
Is there, I guess my concern is, is whether or not we provide a window in which we're going to put this back on the agenda and put it under consideration, because while I understand your concern, not to rezone it effectively kills the opportunity for there to be a veterans' center, which harms the veterans, and I don't want to take out the sins of...
No, I don't want to take it out on the veterans at all. I want it to come back on the agenda, but I guess my preference would, and I think if we postpone, it has to be to a date certain, it's correct. So, yeah, we'll have to give another date, and I don't know, I'd hope to postpone it until such a time as they were willing to come forward and have this discussion with us as to what happened, because I still don't think we have a full understanding from what was in that story. I think more questions than answers were in there. So, let's, I'd say postpone it for, maybe the next meeting would be too soon, I don't know if they can come forward by then, but we can put it on the next meeting, and maybe they'll be willing to give us some information between now and then, and we'll just reconsider it at that time. Yeah, because I'm certainly, I was open to that rezoning from the beginning, but now I'm really kind of questioning this bit.
Two things, I guess I'd say, is, one, currently, there is no project. They got bids, the bids were 40% higher than what the bond issue allowed them. They have no money to supplement the million and a half bond issue to compensate for the 40% overage. So, if I read, if the paper was correct, when I read it, they plan to rebid it sometime this winter, December, so they're not, they have no project until they find out whether they can get a bid that would reduce it by 40%, or redraw plans that would make it be reduced by 40%.
Yeah, they never took bids, just, you know, they never, they just, we recommend that they not take bids till February, because stuff's been coming in Ohio, so they, the article, I think, said 40% high on other projects we're letting, so they never did take bids, they're gonna take bids, I think, in January, February, or something.
So we're not harming anybody's time schedule here, so...
I don't think, we checked with them, but they were not...
We can even post on it to, you know, February, January.
We said it right, we had other projects coming in.
I would be inclined to postpone it to the next meeting, because if they needed more time, then we could postpone it again, but if we postpone it a month, then how can they come in two weeks, kind of?
Exactly.
Plus, right now, it's at the forefront, I mean, if we wait, it might look kind of ill-timed, like, why are we not getting an answer, why are we...
It'd be best just to clear the air now.
I would, like I say, I'm not opposed, we certainly want that center for our vets, but the taxpayers need to be assured that they have not been, had information kept from them.
In October 14?
Yeah.
October 14?
Yeah, two weeks is fine with me, we can do it at the next meeting, and then if we haven't heard anything, we'll just move it to the next meeting. There's no, with that information that Matt just gave us, I don't feel like I'm harming their project, and at the same time, trying to look out for the best interest of the taxpayers of Council Bluffs.
Okay, so, yeah, I would just put a date on it, and I'm with that.
So we postpone rather than table, then, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you table it, and then do not take action on it the next meeting, it dies.
So I'll have to keep it alive by postponing.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any other discussion on that item? Anything else on the ordinances? Anything on the resolutions?
On 7A, the urban revitalization area for gun school area, well, Don, what's the cost of the tax abatement over 10 years projected to be?
I haven't really figured that. Assuming they go with the 36-unit proposal, probably looking at $65,000 per assessed value per unit, times 36, multiply that times .45.
Okay. I can do the math, thank you.
When you come up, Matt, you're doing the math. Financial whiz.
You can get this on there.
Math in public, don't try this at home.
I was checking my Facebook, seeing if anybody...
I will just say one thing, though, that how this project is funded will determine how it is going to be taxed. If they receive the CDBGR funding, it will be taxed just as any other market rate project, although there will be some income restrictions, the assessor will just have to take that into consideration in coming up with the value. So that's when I come up with, let's say, $65,000. However, if that is unsuccessful, as I was saying, they are going to apply for a low-income taxes credit. That will have more units, and that, there is state law that says that the assessor shall treat that as an income approach only. So that assessed value per unit, I'm gonna guess would go down to 25, plus or minus, you know?
Yeah. That's why I picked up, that it really depended upon which funding method that prevailed.
It does.
Okay.
And we, currently, because it's a school building, a public property, we get no property tax from it today.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess just as a housekeeping matter, I would recommend, actually, that you address 7A right after the hearing and 4A.
That makes sense.
That makes, yeah, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's go with it. Do we have to amend the agenda?
Can you approve the agenda, I'm into...
Thank you.
Other questions on the resolutions? I can't find my calculator mode.
I was ready, you know, that busted up.
I reached right for it, and I froze.
I do have to back up, that formula I gave you is an error, because the multifamily projects are going to get a rollback. Okay, so, the best I can do is send you something prior to the next meeting, but it will...
Like 5% a year until it reaches...
I wanted to say it was around 7% over seven years, and it'll get down to a single-family rate.
Okay.
Does that, do they have them out, I mean, they're in the back row, they might know, they know. Do you guys know the numbers of...
On the rollback, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, I thought it was 5% a year on, but that's commercials, so I don't know if it was...
5% a year for seven years, maybe, till...
No, commercials, 5%, 5%, and that's done, but multifamily was...
Multifamily, I think, is five and five, and then it deviates a little bit after that, doesn't it, seven after that?
Ends at about 60% or so, I think.
It does exist.
60.
We can do some calculations for you on the exact numbers based on the two funding options before this evening.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
I did have one thing in the public hearings that I did not get to, and that's 4D, and I don't know if everybody, because I didn't get it until like right before I got here, but Pete did send out an email about their involvement with parking, did you, did everybody get a chance to?
I just read it when I walked in here, because I was, yeah, same.
If it's all right, I'm just gonna have him come up and speak to it, because I didn't think anybody else would have had a chance, and Pete, would you want to reiterate what you put in your email?
Which email were you talking about?
The one we got.
The one we got, like, right before study session started regarding parking?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, I was approached by several, two or three businesses on the 100 block, just their concern about parking up there, and what I indicated was that the foundation was willing and interested in sort of looking at a long-term solution for parking, and that we were happy to bring together a group of people and look at different options that could resolve the parking, or identify if there was a parking issue, and then resolve, and make suggestions for how to resolve it long-term. There were a lot of things thrown around, some kind of an elevator on the side of the parking structure that was next door, that would make it easier in access to the 100 block, tearing down the houses, I shouldn't say that publicly, but the other space that might be made available for parking in that area. And I said, "Sure, we're happy to sort of convene, or to get together with whomever, and to talk about this, and to see if we can find a long-term solution to that." So, our position, and I actually spoke with Don about this, and I also spoke to Greg about this, and said, "We're happy to be a part of this if you all deem this as being something that's important for us to address, because we sort of see the 100 block as a really key entertainment district, and makes sense to us that we not limit the development up there." I mean, on the surface of this, it makes sense to us that we do everything we can do to make the development up there successful, and it seems like this is something that the developer felt like was important, so...
We appreciate that. And I did have one question, Larry, the five stalls that are being held back on the Vine Street parking for the stage area, is that, could it be put back to being five stalls? Because my question is, if we ever use the stage area back there, there would be nowhere for anybody to park, to go to an event that had a stage there, because we need the parking. If the five spaces are that critical to the block, could those five spaces be reintegrated back in, or was it set out in such a way that it's kind of a perm... Or was it set out in such a way that it's kind of a permanent thing? And I only ask Larry because I was told that it was.
My idea.
Your idea, yeah. That's why.
I guess, I guess I don't really know the answer to that question. Could it be redesigned? That would probably be something that Greg would have to look at. The idea of that space was a reaction to what we heard from the Hundred Block folks, which was they intend to have some events in the back. And they would not use all the parking, because that's where the folks would be in tents and standing and listening to the concert. So the idea was, you're going to lose that many parking stalls anyway. Having a place where the show wagon could get in and out safely seemed like a good idea. But I don't know if the five, if the five could be used when we are not using it or not, if we had design issues.
Yep, no, no. I mean, I didn't have a problem with those five spaces being used that way, because I didn't know that five spaces was going to be such a critical thing on the block, you know. But it sounds like it may be. And I don't want to give up five spaces there, because I don't see an event really happening back there. We need the parking too bad. So, you know, if you put a stage back there, then people would have to be in the parking lot to enjoy it. Can they ever be utilized back as parking spaces?
Well, the five stalls that you're talking to, I think, were ninety-degree parking off of Vine Street, right?
Okay.
Isn't that what, I think that's the five you're referring to. If you recall, there was kind of an odd quirky ninety-degree parking hack in there that, to be honest, it was probably a good idea to get rid of anyway, because it was just an odd type of parking. The whole stage thing was encouraged by the Hundred Block group. I mean, they're the ones that really pushed hard to get that in there, I think.
They just indicated, or one indicated to me that it was Larry's idea, they didn't push that, so. I, I'm just saying, because I, my concern is, is that, you know, there is, I mean, people are upset, they want parking down there. And I really feel like that to give up those five spots when I don't see any way to utilize it for anything, I just wanted to know, in the future, if this is a problem, can we bring those back as parking places? Because I think we may have to.
Well, not, I mean, there's a bunch of construction that's going on that would have to be torn out to reestablish that parking.
That's what I need to know. There'd be money involved to reestablish those five spots, okay. Not an option then, okay. So I wanted to know.
And from what I gather, it's not just the five spots as much as the location of five spots, from what I've been hearing from most of the business owners along the Hundred Block that they're concerned. One thing, that's like a lot of their handicaps, like buses or individuals use those in front, because it's more convenient than navigating the back. Again, that's just what I've heard. And just, again, the idea that it's certain mindsets, they just want to pull up in the front, get out and go right in, versus parking in the back. So I don't know that it's, I mean, the parking's definitely an issue, there's a lack of parking. But I think along with the lack of parking, a lot of the concerns that I've heard has been the location. I don't know if that's what others have heard, but that's what I've heard.
Well, I just, yeah, I'm trying to work through what can be done for the parking. And pretty much where I'm at on this is that I have to go and I have to look at what was our intention? What did we envision the block to look like? It can't, for me, be about what soil your building wants or what the Hundred Block wants for every item. It has to be, what's the big picture? Our big picture was, we wanted it to be pedestrian-friendly, we wanted people outside down there, festive-type atmosphere. And so I'm trying to figure out for myself, does that out, you know, does allowing that outdoor dining space enhance the block? And, you know, and losing those five spaces, is it really a detriment to the block? And I just, because they are going to be putting in so much parking, if there's some way, and I don't know, you guys would have to tell me this, is what my next question was. Is there any way, they have said that they would leave that open for public parking, is there any way the city can make, can get any kind of assurances on that, that it would have to be at least five spots, that the public would always be allowed to park in without being towed? Because that's what the Hundred Block says, they say that now, but their tenants will complain and they'll take those five spots away. So is there any way the developer can ensure that those five spots that they are doing away with would still be available for public use? I don't know if that's even a possibility.
But if I could, just, let me drop back for just a second, because I want to be clear about what was said and what I responded to. As a city, we were called into a meeting with the Hundred Block folks, Josh Barby called it. It was clear that the request came from them, they wanted a place to put it. They also had extended discussions with us about electrical outlets that they were interested in putting back in the parking lot, so that they could have tents and all kinds of other things. So any suggestion that it was, the idea came from the city is just not correct.
Oh, and I appreciate that information, because my conversation was, why did you guys want these five spots back here? And I was told it wasn't our idea, it was Larry's, so that's why I'm asking.
I just want to remind you that the city's currently building additional parking in Vine Street and we're adding. I don't recall the exact number, it's twenty to thirty, thirty-five stalls gained. Under construction right now. Pardon?
In the back.
In the Vine Street park.
You two guys sit up front, so we don't have to wait for you to walk in.
We'll just get them mic'd, we need to mic them before all the meetings.
To your earlier question about how we could do it, the only way I know is that we do have a development agreement. We are putting a fair amount of public assistance in it. Some of that public assistance is going to come in over a period of years. So we, the only thing I could think of is that we would amend the development agreement and that it would be subject to the developer, willing to make some concessions of holding some space open for public after certain hours. Then we'd have to put some thought in, how do we enforce that?
Is the developer open to amending the agreement to make sure that those, that we're not taking away public's spots and that it will, that in two years it won't be shut down to the public or whatever?
Any other questions on that particular item? Any other questions on the resolutions?
On seven G, just a housekeeping note. This is the Twenty-Eighth Street pump station and we propose to fund this project using sales tax revenues. We recently passed a new ordinance with respect to use of city sales tax revenues. And part of that revised language included that whenever we had projects like this, that we were approving that there would be a finding within the resolution. And there is no such finding here. And I certainly don't want to hold this up, because it just naturally applies in this case. We just need to make sure that we're doing our homework to include that in future resolutions.
And I think, like you say, there's no argument this one is to be utilized for that, or is appropriate usage of that money. And maybe as you approve this agenda or this resolution tonight, go ahead and amend it to include such a statement.
But I guess my memory was that that was in regard to.
The levy.
Yeah.
This is really in a levy project.
Well, actually, that's not what the ordinance language said. It said that whenever we use sales tax revenue, period, there needs to be a fund about using it in accordance with the original bond initiative. So I think that's an important thing, because we don't want to get into semantics about whether or not this is a levy project, a sewer project, we just need to include that, that language in there, that it conforms with the purpose of the.
I think that was your amendment, wasn't it?
Actually, that was Dick's language that he included. So I'm good to go ahead this evening with it, or we can amend it. Either way, it's fine with me, I just want to make sure that we are more careful in that in the future.
Dick, would you mind giving us some suggestions?
I'd like some verbiage for it.
Thank you.
Other questions in regards to the resolutions?
I had two, one with regard to seven H, the appointment of Mr. Howard. Could we get maybe two or three sentence, who is he, why, why have you not? I'm sure he's qualified or you wouldn't have nominated him, but I'm afraid I don't know who he is.
Do you want to do that? We had hoped to have him here today and we couldn't get him here. But I'm kind of putting you on the spot without having his. Yeah.
Mr. Howard was one of several interviewees, we had a lot of really good candidates. His background is such that he's been at ConAgra for several years in the IT department, most recently at Allegiant Creighton Health. Their IT department has apparently been, a lot of it's been gone by the wayside, so he has a position now.
IT consolidation was eliminated locally.
So that's why he's in this position where he's at now, but comes very highly recommended. And one of the major drivers in determining that he was one of the appropriate players, as we had such a good pool of candidates, was we wanted twofold in the respect that we could have a CIO, Chief Information Officer, who had a very good vision and strategic plan for not only the department, but business heads and working with the organization and rest of the department heads to take the city to the next level. But also that they had the hands-on knowledge and know-how of actual technical workings and functions of systems, applications, servers, things like that. Mark came very highly with both of those criterias. Whereas some of them had just the, they could very much do the CIO portion of it, but were too high-level for too long in their careers and didn't necessarily have the hands-on technical expertise that we will need going forward, at least in the beginning, until we make sure that we're where we need to be as a city as a whole. So in a nutshell, and I apologize, I don't have his information in front of me to give you more specific details.
That's, that.
He'll be here, he'll be here tonight, too, if you have questions about his background. We had, can you tell us a little bit about the selection committee who interviewed him?
There were five people on the panel, our HR director, Ellen Stageman, myself, we picked another department head, Justin James, our fire chief was on there. And then we picked two very high-level other IT technical experts. So we had the county's IT CIO, and then we had the school boards, the school, the whole council of school systems, chief technology officer as well. So they were very keen in pointing out and pulling out all the technical expertise and able to ask appropriate questions to make sure they got to what we needed. Again, on that side of the hands-on piece of it, as well as in the high-level strategic and vision and plan for the future and what we need.
Excellent, I commend such a fantastic process, that's wonderful. Thank you, thank you.
And he will be here at seven, so could not get away from work today.
Sure.
And that was key, I think, is that we wanted somebody, they needed to get their hands dirty, had the ability to do that. That we're a small department and not large enough that we could just have somebody sit behind a desk and order work done if, in some situations, they needed to be able to get in there and do it themselves. And so that's what caused him to went out. We had some really good, top-notch candidates that is, when you said, really were, had the oversight ability, the project management ability, but didn't have the hands-on ability if they needed to be able to do that.
The only other question I had was on the city street financial report, if this is an appropriate time to talk about that.
Sure.
Greg, could you educate me on the second page of that report? There's quite a bit of money that is in miscellaneous and certainly I don't expect you to list all of it. But is there, is there a big chunk of that that comes from something? I'm just not familiar with this area as much as I'd like to be. Where does that money come from and what does it generally go to, if there is such a general? Art does, thank you, thank you.
Art reviews it, he doesn't prepare it, but. I didn't get my answer. But on the road use report, they really are looking at it in terms of what comes through road use tax fund money. That's the first column. Second column is everything else that you have. So the things that are getting into miscellaneous would be federal and state assistance that we receive on projects, sales tax portions of projects that, you know, for the sewer part of it, contributions from the water works when we do projects together jointly, assistance from, if there's, if, in the case of a TIF district, like metro crossing, where the TIF dollars are paying for a portion of it and it's getting refunded. So those are the handful of major categories which make up miscellaneous. And again, because of the nature of the report where they're saying, tell us what you're doing with road use tax money exclusively and then lump everything else together, it does create the opportunity for miscellaneous to look like a big number.
Sure, thank you for educating me. Yes, thank you.
Other questions on the resolution? Anything on the applications, permits, applications for permits and cancellations? Anything not on the agenda, anyone had a question in regards to?
A month ago, we had a discussion about the CIP and having get-together to discuss that. When do you anticipate that that will take place?
We will, would like to have you check your calendars and do two-on-two individual in the next week or so, when we get the CIO in place, which I think is October 6th. Then city department heads are going to sit down and talk about the CIP plan. And so we'd like to have your input prior to doing that. So within the next ten days.
Okay.
If that works for you, I was going to bring that up later.
Thank you for that. Okay, appreciate it.
We wanted to make sure we had all the staff on at that place before we started that process. Greg is going to do some of his street stuff because of contract needs. We're a little late in getting started, frankly, but we thought it was important that the new CIO be part of that discussion, so.
Are you going to send us an email with the suggested time?
I don't know if there's particular days that are better for people or.
We have the League of Cities.
First part of next week.
Very good, okay, that gives us a target.
I know, and I was going to say, yeah, let us know as soon as possible, because I'm pushing a ton of appointments into next week.
I don't think I can do it next week at all.
League of Cities this week, so.
We have two impacts.
It'll be tough for me to.
And we can work around your schedules, it doesn't have to be.
And I'll be, my estimate with, you know, whenever you need, but like I say, I'm, I'm going to miss out on a lot of work this year. The only other thing I had that I just wanted to bring up on the study session part is that I was wondering if we could start having something on the study session that each council person serves on different committees in their role as a city council person and maybe if there are updates from those groups, because, you know, there are a lot of, I just don't think to tell, you know, bring it up at study session, hey, I bet with this, you know, advance or whatever and update you on what they're doing. I thought if we just added it to the study session agenda, we could everybody had an opportunity to update us on the committees they set up. That'd be okay.
And I did want to announce that I'd like to appoint Lynn as the mayor pro tem in my absence. She has the longest tenure on the council and I intend to do that, so. But yeah, we'll set something up for that.
Yeah, if it's, you know, if it works for everybody else, I just thought it would be a chance for me to remember and everybody else to, Lynn since I'm like a transportation one and.
All right, twenty-thirty plan?
You got what?
It goes every which way, at least not.
Rich, did one, did one to get hold of you?
I have it online thing, it's here to look at anything.
This year, and related. But we got people in place, but we're going to do a strategic planning. For the City Council Bluffs. And we think that will give you a better opportunity to identify.
Those birds are chickens.
We'll do that probably early November, so we stay out of the holiday season. Have all our department heads together at that point. We talked about that today at staff meeting.
The only week I traveled.
Tim's recommending somebody who did four dodges.
The only week I traveled the rest of the year is that first week of November for that.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to know more about county relationships.
Well, strategic planning's goals and strategies to get to those goals. The CIP certainly, I think capital expenditures are, are a part of that strategy. I mean, this, this police station. And then on the horizon is, so how do you plan for that is.
So that would be a bridge between this plan that's to be approved tonight and.
No, no, that's, that's. Well, the strategic plan may be going forward. Our next three-year document, but then you could identify priorities of where you want the city to go in the future. It won't be for this year's strategic plan.
No, no, that's, no, that's.
It is kind of the middle ground of time, isn't it? In the sense of, this, this is the overall arching, where do we think everything ought to be?
Completely under it, well, not completely under it.
Sure, but that, that one's more real in a sense, right? Not as real as a CIP, if that makes any sense. Not as concrete.
I, I don't see the strategic plan, comprehensive plan as.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
This, this is a strategy for the city. And not the, not how the city develops, but what you want to see done is in city government.
Okay, a, a layer of the CIP, yeah, yeah, okay.
So it's like one step you on that retreat we had a couple of years ago, that we identified. Back to my glasses.
Why am I betting that's not the case?
Oh, they've turned it off because of the weather, not.
Certain time of year it turns up.
We need a big screen in here.
Yeah, you do. Isn't quite outfit.
Okay. I just have a few brief comments and I'll turn it over to our consultant. He'll go over a ten or fifteen minute slide. First of all, the city ordinance does establish the city planning commission. I forget what chapter it is, I think it's chapter two. And the planning commission is charged with preparing a comprehensive plan of the city. The last comprehensive plan we had adopted was 1994. We've amended it numerous times. So about a year and a half ago, we went through an RFP process, received a significant amount of interest, interviewed four or five firms, and we settled on Hustle Levine under Chicago to assist us in this. Their work is essentially now complete, handing it off. But to get where we are today, we had formulated a steering committee. We have held several and numerous open houses. We engaged the public, attempted to engage the public through MindMixer, which is an online system where people can express their opinions and desires of the community. We had a mapping software, I think it was called SMap. Where they could go online and do that. And some of the stuff will come out in the presentation. There is do-it-your-own kits. So we gathered as much information as we can. So, you know, we feel that we've, you know, vetted the document with the public. That's not to say that we're, you know, there isn't objections out there. But we think a vast majority of people would, would find the, the document acceptable. So with that, we've brought it before the steering committee. They have recommended its approval. And we brought it before the planning commission last meeting and they recommend unanimously to approve it. Yes.
On the public participation part, what would you, what would you say? Were, were you pleased with the, the amount of public participation? Internet, public meetings, et cetera, versus what we've seen in the past?
I think the initial meetings, we were pleased. I think they're average. You know, people in my profession do believe in public participation and quite frankly, you don't always feel that you've achieved it. But we believe, and I think Rose worked very hard at providing numerous ways that people could. And that might be a question for John to talk about as far as, you know, they do this all over the country and he could give you a feel for how we might stack up with, with somebody else. So with that in mind, I'm going to introduce John Osseal, who's Principal of Hustle Levine, and he'll go over a presentation.
All right, thanks, Council, for having us here this evening, or this afternoon. Can I hit the lights a little bit? You might be able to see better and actually be a little cooler, so it may be a win-win.
That would be great.
Oh, how's that? I feel better already. As Don said, I'm just going to spend ten, fifteen minutes going through this. It's, I can't go through every line of recommendation of a hundred-page, eleven-by-seventeen, double-sided document because you wouldn't make your seven o'clock meeting this evening. A couple of things that were said earlier in your deliberation regarding one other issue. I know Councilman Watson talked about enabling acts and that's important here because of standard state, planning enabling acts and standard state zoning enabling acts is what allows states to zone and plan. So that goes back to the twenties, so almost a hundred-year history of cities planning comprehensive planning for themselves. The other thing goes back to what Councilperson White was talking about with regard to the parking spaces. And what she said, I think is extremely applicable to this in context. And she said, "We can't let the desires of one building or what one group wants." We have to step back and say, "What are we trying to achieve here?" What is a pedestrian atmosphere with mix of uses? And so step back and seeing what we're trying to achieve, big picture. It's not about one property owner, it's not about one sector, it's not about one specific area, but what's the game plan for the entire city going forward for the next fifteen years? And that is what a comprehensive plan is. It is a foundation for decision-making. It is providing assistance as you consider other issues. Prioritizing capital improvement expenditures, evaluating a proposed development, deciding how much incentives to give for a development in a certain area if it furthers the recommendations and aspirations of the community as enumerated in the comprehensive plan. It is something to help you make informed decisions going forward. And the best way to think about it is over a ten-year period, you'll make thousands of decisions related to the city. And you can be incredibly busy. And a decade can go by and you can say, "We've been so busy for the past ten years and we're where we were ten years ago and we've been so busy." What you want to be able to say is, "We've been so busy over the last ten years and look what we've accomplished. Look how far we've moved the needle." Well, you need a playbook to help guide incremental decisions so collectively the impact is big over a long period of time. That's a comprehensive plan. So I'll go pretty quickly through this. Again, it's been going on for about a year and a half now. We've had several meetings, open houses. The structure of the document is introduction and background, public participation summary, community profile, sort of a snapshot, if you will, of Council Bluffs, the vision, goals and objectives, our aspirations, the community's aspirations for the future, a land use and development plan, transportation plan, parks, open space and environmental features plan, community facilities and infrastructure plan, hazard mitigation and sustainability plan, community character plan, sub-areas, and then implementation framework. The process, again, has been gone over the last year and a half. There have been several different opportunities for people to participate, both in terms of small group, one-on-one, large group, do-it-yourself workshops. People could do a workshop out of their home with their church group or if they wanted to, they could participate in their pajamas at three o'clock in the morning, eel, cold pizza, online, because they couldn't make it. They worked a second shift, they couldn't make it to an evening meeting. So we really tried to cast a wide, wide net. And there were several public workshops, focus groups, key person interviews, open houses, visioning sessions, et cetera. Online utilization include questionnaires for businesses, questionnaires for business owners and operators, SMAP, which is a social mapping application, and MindMixer. And to answer your question about outreach, I would say if I had to assess the number of people that turned out would be typical. We've worked in communities where there's a lot less, we've worked in communities that were hyper-engaged because nothing's come along in a while to give them that forum. So they really glommed onto it. There's been things here in the past, there's sort of a momentum of participation, strong or weak, over the years, they've had time to participate or chances to. In some communities, when we come in, they've done nothing for thirty years. So they really zero in on it. The thing is, even though the number of participants might not have been exemplary, it was a typical amount, it was a good amount. But the feedback that we got was a really engaged people who did show up. And it was a really good cross-section from, we had some really young kids, some students show up. We've had some, a lot of elderly people show up. We had business owners and industry owners, we had stay-at-home dads, stay-at-home moms. We had a wide spectrum of participants, so we got a good cross-section. This is sort of a snapshot of SMAP. It's sort of a composite map of problematic intersections, key redevelopment priority sites, city assets, problematic pedestrian areas. People could map whatever they wanted to from home and we could composite map all of this as part of one of the things. Some of the key categories, we heard themes that kept coming up time and time again, had to relate with the image and marketing of the community to the region. A lot of people didn't feel as though Council Bluffs owned its own narrative. They thought it really sort of abided by what other people said about the city as opposed to the city saying, "This is who we are, we're not letting others define us." Key development sites, there was a lot of development discussion talked about, employment opportunities, the essential component that is the core neighborhoods of the different, of the different areas of the city, transportation, growth and expansion, service providers, then a cooperative government. Those are some of the recurring themes. Section three is community profile. Let me say real quickly, is a planning process has to do three things. You have to establish what your starting point is, whether it's good, bad or ugly. You have to have an honest conversation of what Council Bluff says right now in terms of market potential, demographics, school, land use, zoning, infrastructure. You have to know what you have to deal with, that's one, that's community profile and input. Number two is you know where you're going or you know where you are. Where do you want to go? What's your vision for yourself? What are your aspirations? That's number two. Three is how do you get there? So this is part of the community profile. We basically examine everything, existing zoning. We analyze your code, the policies, the regulations, the recommendations. We take a look at all your past plans and policies. These are all the past plans we examined, a summary of each, mapped out where the plans were. We took a detailed market demographic information. The reason being is we don't want to make a land use recommendation if we know there's no market viability for it. That would be a disservice. So we had to make sure everything was sort of beta-tested against market realities. And that's very crucial, we do that upfront. We map all the existing land use, not the way you'd like the city to be used or not how it's necessarily zoned, but how it's actually being used now. We took a look at all the community facilities, schools, governmental facilities, all the, other public facilities. We in detail looked at the existing transportation, infrastructure system. Our, our team on this consisted of Hustle Levine and HDR. They did a lot of our infrastructure, transportation, open space, hazard mitigation planning. They're familiar with the community and we've partnered with them throughout the country. We mapped all the existing transit and bicycle mobility, bus routes and everything else, existing infrastructure issues and existing natural resource areas, steep slopes, flood plains, open spaces, water features. We did all this, we had a good idea as to what was on the ground. We did a detailed synthesis report, had a steering committee meeting to vet the issues and opportunities based on that existing conditions assessment. Next, moved into the visioning goals and objectives phase. This is where we meet with members of the community in large working sessions clustered around tables. This is where you see people doing what they think is planned. They got the markers and their posters, their maps and they're working with their neighbors as to what they would like to achieve, not, "I think there's development potential." Okay, where and what would you like to see there? "I don't think traffic is very good." "Okay, what would you do about it, where to fix it?" It was pretty specific. So from this exercise, we created a vision statement and the goals and objectives. The vision statement is written as a retrospective. It's thirty, it's, it's 2030 and you're writing about Council Bluffs as it exists in 2030. So it's written sort of in the future, looking back. We also then created several different areas of recommendations specifically for goals and objectives. Growth and annexation, neighborhoods and housing, commercial areas, industrial areas, transportation, community services and infrastructure, parks and recreation, the environment, stormwater and flood management, history and identity and local government. For each one of these categories, there was a specific goal and under each one of these goals, there's anywhere from six to almost twenty specific objectives the city ought to be trying to achieve within this category of issues. Again, the issues came out of all the outreach that we did. Next section is the land use plan. It's sort of the heart and soul of a lot of comprehensive plans. This is a land use plan for the entire city. Looks similar to the existing land use, but there are sort of significant differences. The land use legend, I won't read through it, but basically the yellows and tan colors are residential. Yellow is single-family, darker tan or brown is multifamily with various degrees in between. Commercial, there's three different types of commercial. Basically, you have your regional commercial, your corridor commercial, your neighborhood commercial, your downtown mixed-use commercial. Three different levels of intensity for industrial. That's sort of the really, really light purple to the medium to the darker purple. And then parks and open space areas are green, public uses are blue. We then break down the land use plan into specific areas. This first one is the housing character areas. We break down the city into several different types of residential areas. You've got your traditional neighborhoods, your contemporary neighborhoods. You've got the areas around the lake, you've got the areas that are further up north and the central areas, Los Hills, where the topography really drives the development pattern. But each one of these areas is mapped. The character of each one of the areas has a detailed narrative. You can't just say, "These are our objectives for residential development," because it's different in different areas of the city. And when you have a city that is established, you have to be respectful of that context, that character. You can't just come in and ignore what is there before you. And different areas have different sets of issues. The area near Broadway, the yellow area, you see the traditional area here. Some of these areas, they're more grid pattern, they're more modest housing sizes and lot sizes. They're the older housing stock. There's a lot of transition in some areas from single-family structures being compartmentalized to multifamily occupancy. There's areas of maintenance in some areas, sort of burdening them with adjacent industrial uses or commercial influx into the neighborhoods, issues that are unique to those areas. So we identified what we categorize as six different residential areas with detailed recommendations and characterizations for each. We did the same thing for the commercial areas, breaking it down into five different commercial areas. And you can see them all right here. The downtown, Broadway, West Broadway corridor. And you can see the other ones scattered around the city with different characterizations and levels of intensity. Sort of that yellow mustard color is sort of the neighborhood commercial, intended to serve the nearby neighborhoods and not regional impact. We did the same thing for the industrial character areas. We identified four different basic types of industrial, anywhere from sort of office research type to heavy industrial and everything in between. You've got a really strong employment base here. Unlike a lot of communities, you have a lot of heavy industrial in certain areas of the city. The tech industry is growing in the region. So we tried to identify the appropriate areas for the different types of employment, office research, light industrial and heavy industrial uses. And I know I'm going through this quickly, but I just want to sort of get it out there on the record. Again, and let me just stop at the land use plan before we go to transportation. Planning isn't regulatory like zoning. This doesn't dictate what you can and cannot do with your piece of property. Zoning regulates that. This is to inform decision-making. I think one of the first things a city has to do when they adopt this, after it's adopted, is to amend its zoning ordinance. Because if you have a comprehensive plan that says you want to do X and a zoning that says you want to do Y, you're never going to accomplish what's in your plan. It's important to plan first. Zoning is not planning. Zoning is a tool to implement planning. You do your planning first, you adopt it. You say, "This is what we want to achieve." Then you say, "What do we have to do to change our zoning to begin to get what we say we want?" So this is the first step that comes in. We looked at the transportation plan, this was led by HDR. We did a detailed overview of the whole city. We took a look at things like the complete street concept. I know this is not new to a lot of people in this room. Complete streets is a notion that infrastructure systems for transportation have to accommodate, to the extent possible, the pedestrian, bicyclists, the vehicle, transit, freight, everything. You're not just designing for the car and then trying to figure out how to accommodate everybody else twenty years later. So we identified areas in the city where complete streets concepts could be shown. What you see here is First Avenue. Different areas for local access, we showed some examples here, I'm just cutting to some key pages in the plan. This sort of shows where you have existing development next to vacant area and how this needs to tie into it, so you don't get all these cul-de-sac streets in these cornfields or where you get streets that are right next to each other, but they don't attach to provide that continuity. Areas of stitching-back neighborhoods where the railroad divides it. How to consolidate some curb cuts and provide cross-access to improve circulation and safety for commercial areas while allowing traffic flow to go a little bit better. So we get down to this level of the policy recommendations for planning. We then take a look at how to connect bike trails. We then take a look at how to connect bike trails through the different areas of the city. We take a look at some of certain street extensions that we're proposing in different areas of the city to make the grid work better and the function work better. So this, these are site-specific examples, taken right from the plan. This takes a look right here, some of the key transportation, infrastructure that exists everywhere from highways down to local streets. There's a hierarchy of transportation, your public works guys can tell you this. It goes to access management, traffic volume, speed, and design. It starts out with highways, limited access on one end, going down to local streets on the other. Local streets, you could have a driveway every seventy-five feet. Highway, you have entrance ramps every several miles, so, and everything in between. It goes highways, arterials, collectors, locals. We then take a look at all the pedestrian and bicycle mobility issues for the entire city, noting where all the existing trails are, and where we recommend the trail connections be made. If you have a bike path, it really only does good if it gets you somewhere, connects to something. And too often, that's not, not provided. So we talk about the regulatory considerations and the different development considerations that have to be made incrementally over time to provide this network. Again, we talk about supporting transit and the potential for high-speed rail. We talk about where these uses could go and how they would be located. You're lucky to be served by two airports, one the municipal airport, then the one right across the river. Parks, environmental features, and open space. I think there has been a heightened awareness of the importance of environmental attributes to the city. I think because of some of the hazard problems and flooding problems that have happened in the recent past. Some areas, I think, have been treated as alleys in the past, as sort of industrial areas, and now sort of the front door to the city in terms of open space, natural remediation, repairing areas and things like that. So this plan talks about all the different recreation areas. And it dovetails with your parking recreation master plan, which you already have. This doesn't look to circumvent that. It looks to take that already adopted plan and dovetail into the other recommendations of the city to make sure everything we're doing is supporting that. We talk about the riverfront, the different public areas and recreation amenities and environmental amenities along that river. We also talk about Los Hills and Lake Manawha and other lakes in the area, specifically about the recommendations for those environmental features. Local creeks and streams, and also the other parks and recreation throughout the whole city. And again, I'm pulling out sort of the key flow of the document, just to sort of get it all out there. Parks and Recreation Framework, this covers all the parks and recreation in the entire city. This dovetails exactly with your parking recreation master plan. It identifies where the parks are, where the areas of the city are that are underserved by parks in terms of pedestrian access. One of the key things that ranked highest in terms of where people rate their quality of life is walkability. Eight years ago, we never heard that word in planning, almost ever. When we said, "What are the most, ten, ten most important things to where you live?", we never heard that. Now it's always one, two, or three, no matter where we work in the country. People want to be able to walk to what they want to do and what they need to do. So we identify the areas, again, consistent with your recreation master plan, of the areas of the city that are underserved, that's those red circles. Community facilities and infrastructure. One of the biggest issues we ran into here is something that, that came up time and time again that is being addressed by cities across the country, and that is adaptive reuse of schools and other public facilities that are closing. A school is uniquely non-residential use that is compatible in a residential neighborhood. If the school closes, you have a large parking area, a large green area, and a large building. But what could go in there, retrofit that building, and still be compatible with single-family homes across the street? It's a tough hit. And you've got this issue coming up time and time again in some of the structures that you've got. You're not alone in doing it. You know, Detroit just passed a, a plan and ordinance a couple of years ago where they pre-qualified, I think, fourteen different uses for schools. So as long as you do one of these fourteen and meet these conditions, you can do it as of right. Because it became such an issue. So we addressed the issue of adaptive reuse, identified all the city facilities, all the school facilities. Sort of nice to see all these mapped in one place at one location, with text that supports all the different things. Infrastructure as well, we identified all the different levee areas, all the different flooding issues, and all the different utilities that sort of handle this. Chapter nine is Hazard Mitigation Sustainability Plan. We identify here all the different sort of floodplain areas and open space areas. We talk about the different ways of using these areas for sustainable best practices, going out when revenue was available, buying properties that continually funded, taking, getting them out of the floodplain area. Other properties that need to be reconstructed but stay in the flood area, how do you reconstruct those properties? How do you make sure the levees up to speed and make sure that it is accredited throughout the system? We also took a look at community character. Community character, a lot of communities is defined by neighborhoods and commercial areas. But here, one of the biggest and most influential components is the environmental assets that you have here. The rolling topography in many of the areas, the water features that you have, it drives a lot of the character. So we talk about the built and development character, we talk about the natural character, we talk about the public realm, the streetscape area, where it's being treated well, where it needs to be treated a little bit better. We talk about private development, break it down into several key areas to define the character of development that should take place in that area. Again, not dictating the uses, but saying, "If uses go in here, you need to sort of reinforce, reinforce this character of the area for the city." So we try to get the character and identity issue from natural areas, one, from the public realm, that's two rights away, and then three, from the private property and private development. Collectively, those three things will create sort of the visual character of the community. We also note the importance of historic preservation, some just stunning structures throughout the city. We identify where all the historic districts are, as well as all the historic sites. And we identify those here on this map as well, and integrate those in the recommendations of the rest of the plan. We also talk about four different sub-areas. Again, the notion of sub-areas is more important in comprehensive planning than it can be because a lot of your residential neighborhoods aren't going to change a whole lot. A lot of your big, large, regional commercial areas are going to be big, large, regional commercial areas. You want to make them better. But sometimes, some areas are those areas that are more susceptible to change. They're the ones with a high number of vacancies. Maybe it's the largest concentration of lack of fully utilized parcels. It's the sites that are going to change because of market conditions, physical conditions. It's the places where developers are looking to do something. So you need a little bit more attention as to guidance as to what they should do. So we looked at four different areas. We looked at the West Broadway area, we looked at the Canville-Tinley neighborhood, looked at the South Main area, and the I-8065 area. The West Broadway area, we broke into a west, central, and east. Each one of the sub-area plans is broken down into a series of recommendations for transportation, circulation, mobility, and access. It is broken down into an urban design and a character recommendations. And we identify potential development opportunity sites. We don't dictate the use that has to go on them. We don't dictate a site plan that has to be realized. But we characterize the potential of development throughout the different areas. One of the most important things a developer needs, this is why developers, if a plan is done well, like them, embrace them. A developer doesn't want to waste their time figuring out what a city wants to do with a piece of property. That costs a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of resources. And they don't want to go through the public hearing process to see, "Hey, let's see if the city, it would go for this." We have no idea what they want. They would rather have what they call fair certainty, reasonable expectations with the city expects for a piece of property or an area. And a developer, if a plan is done right, says, "You want to do this for this intersection? We didn't know you wanted to do that. We could do a development there, you get what you want, and we can make a buck. This is the type of development we would love to do. But you have to provide the vision. You have to put the aspiration out there. You have to provide the fair certainty so the development community can partner with you, as opposed to saying, 'I don't know, the city doesn't know what they want to do over there.'" We have to put that vision forward. So we do that by identifying in all the sub-area plans, key redevelopment sites, that's these boxes. We talk about the size of the properties, what it would take to assemble them or make them viable development sites, the market potential. And we say, "This is the type of development we'd like to see in these areas, or we think there's the potential for." We also show areas of commercial expansion, again, this is Broadway. And we also show the improvement along First, that's sort of a transit and complete street corridor. Here's the Canville-Tinley sub-area plan. This is a neighborhood that is anchored by a pretty good institutional use here. You've got industrial uses on the far western edge, and you've got a neighborhood sort of caught in the crossfire. You've got some homes that are suffering from deferred maintenance. You have areas on some of the north-south cross-streets where end properties are sort of subdivided real small on the street, as opposed to orienting north and south. So you have three homes on what should be one property. You've got a lot of trap, truck, cut-through traffic. So we took a show that, this is an example of a functional framework plan for a sub-area, showing how to increase the stable industrial you have here to make it better, provide parking cul-de-sacs and traffic flow that would maybe begin to allow this residential area to recover and reinvest, and not have it diluted by industrial traffic. And to show how some of these other things could be neighborhood features for the area. We plot the transit service for the area, where the gaps are in the sidewalk that have to be fixed. And we begin to make these broad framework recommendations, so a neighborhood can begin to recover. This is the South Main area, a little bit of the bipolar sub-area, if you have one. This is it. It's an area of the city that doesn't really know what it wants to be. It has some cool sort of loft buildings down there. You've got the big, huge ConAgra over here, which is going like gang buzzers. You have this large potential industrial over here where the Public Works Yard are, and some other things. You've got a new trail connection that's recently been upgraded. So how do you begin to dissect this area into its parts that allow each part to work, but the area to become an area that functions with the adjacent area not being representative of what it is? And that's what this sub-area does. And the last one is the I-80 highway six sub-area. Because of the topography here, it's really challenging in one quadrant. You have the Iowa Western College here, which is a great anchor for part of it. You have the potential for commercial, you have the potential for office research distribution. You have the ability to have a research stuff affiliated with the, with the college. You've got some topography issues here that will allow you to have some industrial uses there. But again, the topography makes it challenging. So we try to identify these issues to frame out how to begin to approach this important area of the city. The reason we do this is simple, and the reason we do a comprehensive plan is simple. You don't want to be back on your heels reacting to proposals as they come at you. You want to have a game plan. You want to be flat-footed and say, "You know, we thought about this a year ago. And we took a hard look at this area, and this is what we want to do here." And if someone wants to move you off that position, they'd have to make a pretty compelling case. But you should then be able to use this plan to guide and review that recommendation for that development. The last chapter is implementation. It talks about how to use the plan on a day-by-day basis, who the city needs to partner with to get things done because the city is not expected, nor can it do everything itself. We identify the potential sources of funding that you can go after to pursue to do specific recommendations. And we talk about the different types of things you can do, the zoning ordinance, stormwater recommendations, capital improvement program, different funding incentives. We break it down by category, sort of like a menu. So it'll sort of give you a little bit of direction as to how, as a city council, you can begin to direct resources, staffing, or funding, or otherwise, to begin to get done the recommendations of the comprehensive plan over a ten, fifteen, twenty-year period. So again, that is, in a pretty concise nutshell, an overview of the document. Again, it covers a lot of territory. It is meant to be a foundation for decision-making. It is not regulatory, it is meant to help inform you so that you can make decisions that are a little bit more, step back to ask the question, "What are we trying to accomplish here?" We can't be reactionary to this person or to that group, but what are we trying to accomplish as a community? And you use this to help evaluate proposals, direct resources and staff initiatives, partner with the right agencies and organizations to move the needle forward. So that's a lot very quickly, but I wanted to get out there and, available for any questions. Mayor Porton.
On a day when I haven't migrated. I think it's, it's, you know, I worked on the 1994 plan a long, long time ago. And it's amazing to see what, where we've come from and, and what we could be. And I think it's, it's, it's pretty exciting. We do refer to the 1994 plan and its provisions often when development comes in front of us. And, and I think this is going to be a great blueprint going forward.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, counsel.
All right, executive session.
Well, should have gone to executive session.
At Council Bluffs Savings Bank, we take pride in our community in volunteering our time to helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We are Council Bluffs people operating at Council Bluffs Bank to help Council Bluffs be a better place to work and live. Hometown banking, the way it used to be.